Just five seconds here.
Of course, sorry Seth.
No, you're totally fine. You'll see the little got it button. Jacob, that's managing that. It's gonna push that got it. Is it gone? When it's gone, you are all set. Have a good meeting.
All right, we're calling the June 16th hearing to order. This is the meeting of the Cituit Zoning Board of Appeals. Cituit Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is occurring live in the select board hearing room and also available via Zoom, where we have some participants, including one of our board members, and the information on how to access that Zoom meeting can be found on the EBA's website. We are going to begin with our first application, continued from April 21st, 2022, brought by Thomas P. Mc. I'm sorry. Second application.
Right.
We're gonna flip it a little bit because of an attorney conflict. We are going to start with our second application, continued from April 21st, 2022, brought by Scott and Tara McGavin of 39 Arrowwood Drive in Cituit, requesting a variance in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 5, 20.5 F of the Cituit zoning bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals make grant to allow for the construction of an in-ground pool and retaining wall at 39 Arrowwood Drive in Cituit. Good evening, Mr. Vito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you know this hearing has been continued since our first hearing before the board? First hearing, the board suggested the applicant go back to the Conservation Commission and seek approval of the proposed work. That has been done, and on June 6th of this month, the commission did approve to approve the project for the installation of the in-ground swimming pool and the retaining wall. There is a major change to the original plan that I submitted back in December. I mean, so that I did submit to you yesterday the revised plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission. The, there's a substantial change in the location of the pool. Instead of putting it to the right side of the house, it is directly behind the rear of the house. It'll be placed in the existing lawn area. The amount of alteration on the slope has been reduced from 1,463 square feet down to 700 square feet, which is slightly less than half of what we were asking for in the original application. Other than that, there's no changes to our request in our arguments for seeking the relief. So with that, I'll end and answer any questions the members may have.
Thank you. I do remember the initial application on this. I'm glad to hear that Concom was able to proceed with their hearing and make a determination. It sounds like they worked with the applicant to modify and somewhat lessen the slope and the impact and through that grant their permit. And given that they were able to do that, Janine, we haven't received any direct correspondence from Concom. They knew this was. I'm under the impression that that is evidence to us that they can receive this variance without defeating the purpose of the bylaw. I'm of the impression that in meeting the requirements of Concom on this and changing their plan in order to do so gives us a window to give them relief from the 25% bylaw without defeating the purpose. I don't think there's any problem with them meeting the first prong of the variance test, the unique topography of a lot. We're dealing with slopes and drainage. So I think that really hits the nail on the head. And I think by working with Concom and coming to a resolution, they've met the second prong of that variance test. I would, I think, I think Concom concluding really answered all of my other questions on this. Susan, anything else?
I don't. I have the same recollection that we were waiting for Concom.
Yep.
And in my notes, too.
Other than them obviously needing to comply with the specifics of the Concom permit, anything else we should be thinking of?
No, not that I, not that I.
Any members of the public, either here in person or on our Zoom call, have any questions or comments on the Arrowwood Drive variance application? Okay, no. This is meant to be a Zoom. You can turn on your video and raise your actual hand, or you can raise your Zoom hand. We got nothing. Mr. McGavin, hello? Thanks for attending again, and sounds like things are trending towards your pool probably for the early summer of 2023 at this point, but it'll be well worth it if it goes that way. I think we are all set on public questions and comments. With that, I'll make a motion that the board move to grant the variance application for the property at 39 Arrowwood Drive for the swimming pool, retaining wall, and resulting slope as shown, I should say grade slope maybe, as shown on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering dated May 2022, and that that granting of the variance be subject to any conditions and restrictions contained, of course, in the relevant permit issued by Cituit Conservation Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Go. That is a variance. Thank you, Mr. Vito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations, McGavins, and we'll get you a decision that's going to be rather short incorporated in Concom's formal draft.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Janine, I'll take care of that. I gotta talk to you. As variance is good, that's what it is. We're gonna move back to what appears on our docket as a first application, brought by Thomas McCarthy of 49 Aberdeen Drive in Cituit, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals make grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 121 Jericho Road. Hello, sir.
Hi, my name is Robert Crawford. I'm representing Thomas McCarthy. The planners of the plan.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Sure. Tell us quickly, we're a little bit familiar from the first go around here, if you could just tell us quickly what's going on with the property.
Well, this property is over 8,100 square feet. It's South Platte Road and west of Jericho Road. The existing house, 100 Jericho Road, and lies 16 into the street at the worst point. We're proposing to replace that with floor bedroom flooring. Including the garage and everything, it's about 84 feet in length. And we it's a non-conforming lot, obviously, because it's less than 10,000 square feet and it's a non-conforming house. As far as the proposed setbacks are concerned, the minimum setback we're proposing is 5.1 feet, not being in the street. The house does, the new house does meet all the setbacks. Foam road, front, front setback, inside and rear setbacks that are required by Cituit by law. The lot itself lies in 19, the lot has its own AB elevation 15. First floor would be approximately about 17. Showing flood banks, as they require by FEMA. In situations like this, you can see ground ranges from elevation 12 and south end to about 8 north end. Trying to answer any questions.
George, was a calculation done for the average setback on Jericho Road?
The average setback?
The average, right. So the code says 30 feet. What's the current average setback? I can't imagine.
The average setback is in the street. It ranges between 4 feet and 6 and 1/2 feet into the street currently.
You said like this property might even, I I'd be surprised if the average setback gave them less than 5.1. But again, how? I'm just trying to gauge, you know, how far off it would be. Yeah, I mean, clearly, it's removed, it is lessening a non-conforming, right? Yeah, currently, it is 6 and 1/2 feet into the street. The proposal is to move it 7 and 1/2 feet back from Jericho Road. We appreciate that.
Between 5.1 and 8.1.
Yeah. Yeah, and also.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick one. I note on the plan that the house to the west, number 119, is showing a setback of 14 feet.
Yeah. Thank you.
So there's one indication of what's more normal in this area.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm just trying to give it a little bit of context that way, right? I doubt that anything on Jericho Road, I doubt the average setback on Jericho Road is 0 feet.
No, no way.
No way. We're making it better with getting rid of the negative 6.5.
Previously, the house 119 Jericho was 3.75 feet from the street, which is recently moved.
Sure.
The setback has been in the last 14 years.
Anything else? That's it. Just curious. Susan?
I don't have anything.
Bob, anything else on this?
No, it's been acknowledged. It's in the FEMA flood zone. It'll be requirements for that elevation of the crawl space. Flood vents control are shown. We appreciate that, so anticipating any difficulty.
Yeah, I you know, we have a house that's actually in the street, more than a foot or two, and very close to the actual paved right way. And well, you know, 5 feet of setback isn't a ton of setback from a street. It's a lot better than it is now, so. Yeah, it's an 11.6 foot move there, so. I guess that's pretty good, and everything else is otherwise in the envelope. Correct. And I also like to get where they will be entering from a street, right? They're moving into a a compliant setback frontage, which is even nicer.
I did have an idea to know, so I'm just gonna give that.
Not at all.
It's, seems to me that a stormwater permit is going to be needed.
That's correct. We have, we have, that's correct. We had the review by the, 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 according to mission.
Fantastic. Anyone from the public here in the hearing room or on Zoom? Yes, sir, just your, your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Mahoney. I live on 5 Foam Road, and I'm a director of water. I'm just an author of this property.
Sure.
Question I have, I looked at that chart that showed the rear setback, and it says 36.1. I just don't see anything like that on here. It looks to me like there's numerous parts of the proposed building that are closer to that stone wall, which is the property line.
So it's actually, it's a unique characteristic of corner lots in Cituit. So Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but along the rear of the home is actually a side setback.
Correct.
The rear setback by virtue of our code, which obviously the rear is the rear of the home. I understand where you're coming from. The rear setback under our code would be this corner here and a radius from this corner. Will hope, will we do it? But by that measurement, the closest area of the home will be that, what was it here? 36.1. Even though what you're seeing is right, there will be portions of the home within 8 feet of that stone wall, which is the rear of the home, but not the rear setback. It's under the code, it's a side setback. So it's, they've computed it correctly.
They did. Yeah, I've never heard of that, and that's why.
Yeah, well, it's, it's. So do you think only something you see on corner lots?
All right, you mentioned the fact that your plan as proposed would lessen the non-conformity. I guess I would ask the board to consider suggesting that the house be moved further towards Foam Road and farther away from the back, well, it's not the back or a property line anymore. I have a property line, but not the back setback. There would be more room in the back between, what I'm doing is the back between the house and the wall. And it would be much mu- much more in conformity.
So actually, I'm, listen, the proposed home is entirely within conformity along that stone wall. The required setback from that stone wall, the property line that that stone wall runs along, is 8 feet, and no portion of the proposed home will be within 8 feet of that stone wall. So I'm, so.
I guess, I guess based on your definition and the way you just explained it, I guess what I'm saying is if they move the house down, it would be even further from the back property line and less non-conforming.
Well, it is not non-conforming, so it would just be further from the wall, which sounds to be something you want, but not the way they chose to lay out, and when an aspect of an application is conforming as proposed, that really puts it gives us a hard time in asking them to change that aspect of an application unless we have a specific reason for it. And here, I wouldn't, because any more that they move it towards Foam Road, honestly, not understanding the benefit of that, then they get into a situation where they're getting closer than the code allows from Foam Road, which is not what we want. So then we'd actually be creating a non-conformity, which we don't want to do. I, you're, you're across Foam Road, or you're, you're right behind me on the other side of that stone wall?
On the other side of the wall.
So I, then, given that, I understand why you'd like a little bit more breathing room there, and I agree with what you're probably thinking, that it's ridiculous that that's not the setback, that that's not the rear setback. I understand your thinking there, and maybe I've spread your mind a little bit, but unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, that is the way the code works, and an 8-foot setback along that wall is allowed. Right, and in fact, they're, all they're doing is going from 9.3 to 8.1, right? It's, it's relatively speaking. For more running feet, and but. I understood. It's allowed. That portion of the application, they don't need this board's permission for, to boil it down. They're allowed to build that close to the stone wall. Yeah. Anyone else with any questions on the application on 121 Jericho Road? No, nobody online. Don't see anyone else on Zoom. Susan? You good?
I'm good. No questions. Thank you.
All right. I will make a motion that the board find that the proposed, the raising and reconstruction, the proposed raising and reconstruction of the home at 121 Jericho Road, shown on the plan drawn by Millbrook Survey, and last dated June 8, 2022, does not create any new non-conformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I love it. All right, welcome.
Hi, Paul. That's quite all right for these six hours.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening. All right, we are going to move on to our third application, continued from May 19, brought by Kenton Bogger Zone of 17 Gates Circle in Cituit, requesting a variance in accordance with 950.2C of the Cituit zoning bylaws. The applicant seeking a variance from the requirements of Section 5, 20.4A, mandating a 150-foot non-disturbed buffer zone from tributaries in the Water Resource Protection District. This is for property five ways spread length, and the applicant has reached out to the building department and this board requesting a continuance to our July meeting. July what? 21st, July 21st. Do we need any discussion? I think it's, it's in the board's interest for asking them for more information or gather their own information. Susan, I, you know.
Agree.
I will make a motion to grant the request for that continuance to our July 21st meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That is going, just for everyone who's following along, that was 5 Williamsburg Lane, if you were attending or viewing for that. That application is being continued to July 21st. We're gonna move on to our fourth application, brought by Allison Rock Stuter of 59 Country Walk in Shelton, Connecticut, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 20.2 of the bylaw to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 10 Alden Street in Cituit. Once again, that applicant has reached out to this board requesting a continuance to our July 21st hearing, July 21st, and unless any members of the board would like to discuss, I'd like to make a motion that we grant that request and continue the 10 Alden Street application to July 21st. All right, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That we are going to move right along to our fifth application. Not brought by anyone who wants to watch the Boston Celtics. It is brought by KME Construction of 209 Broadway in Hanover, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw for any other relief that the Board of Appeals make grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 12 Oceanside Drive in Cituit, increasing the growth for our area by 1 in 20%. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Assett. I'm a civil engineer with Morris Engineering. You're on behalf of the applicant. This project is to raise, raise and reconstruct a single-family home at 12 Oceanside Drive. We've requested a finding and special permit under MGL 48, Section 6, as well as the Cituit zoning bylaws, Section 8, 10.2A. We would also like to ask for a special permit under 470.6.1F, as the property is in the Cituit floodplain and watershed action district. The properties zone are three. The existing non-conformities are with respect to the lot. The lot is non-conforming to area, frontage, and width. The required area is 10,000 square feet, and this lot has 5,770. And the width and frontage are required to be 100 in this S46. The existing house on the property does conform to all the property line setbacks. I'll note that we have the rear on the plan labeled to an interior lot line, but the property to the rear is in common ownership right down to meaningful water, so it actually does conform to the rear setback. The proposed work will be to demolish the house and the garage. The garage will not be rebuilt. The house will be reconstructed in the same general location. The size of the home, the gross floor area, is decreased by 125% from 1,254 square feet to 2,286. We feel a 2,800 square foot home is consistent with the neighborhood, as there are similar-sized homes immediately in the area. The new home will be elevated in accordance with NFIP and building code, it will be on concrete piers, and therefore it will not alter the carriage backs. And the proposed home will also comply with the required setbacks. Therefore, it is not creating any new non-conformities. Thank you.
Susan, you haven't gone first in a while. Any, any questions, comments?
I didn't have any on this one, no.
Wonder why. George, please.
No, we're moving from 5.6 to 6.1, not including the common ownership lot, so even.
Under that. Yeah, they are, you know, I think already that rear, that setback's just wrong on the plan right at the beginning.
Sorry, but I'm trying to keep it under that.
Right. Just for clarification, where does the rear, the setback go to? They have the lot line here, but it's common ownership, so it's. It's the, to meaningful lot. Yeah, so it's, it's in full compliance. All right. Bob, other than some FEMA requirements, anything else on this?
No, I mean, assume the concrete piers that Jeff mentioned are because there's no place to move the house off, or what's, typically I would expect this to be under requirements.
Yeah, conservation typically prefers wood, especially, well, they require it on a barrier breach. This area is not mapped to a barrier breach, so concrete should be allowed. Either way, it will be elevated to the same elevation.
Yeah. No, not on a barrier breach.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on the application for 12 Oceanside Drive in Cituit? That would be here in the room or for those that are left on Zoom. All right. With that, I will make a motion that the board allow the proposed raise and reconstruction of 12 Oceanside Drive in Cituit as shown on the plan drawn by Morris Engineering dated May 20, 2022, and that the board find that the proposed dwelling does not create any new non-conformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. But we are gonna pause that for a moment, because we didn't talk about 470.6F. I will just add to that motion that based on a confirmation of building inspector, that the board also find that the proposed dwelling complies with 470.6F. Items 1, 2, and 3, which we are all rather familiar with, and are, at least in my opinion, a little bit redundant with the FEMA flood insurance. You have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Thank you. We are going to move on to our sixth application, brought by Matthew Cadman of 62 Curtis Street, constituent, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals make. And any other relief that the board would appeal, let's grant to allow for the construction of additions to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 62 Curtis Street, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Number six. Hello there.
Good evening. The applicant.
Well, that's something.
Don't mind if they answer any questions.
Well, you don't sell yourself short.
Welcome in, Catman.
So, so you're the applicant, and I'm sure you're adequate. You're all we have here this evening, your team?
Yeah, chain link, zoom in here.
That's, okay.
Engineer could see.
So, it looks like we are adding on to roughly 12 or roughly 16 by 25 on the east side of the home, and roughly 14 by 12 on the west side of the home. Both of which appear to be well within the building envelope, the required setbacks. And this lot being non-conforming as to. What we've got here?
R2. Not lot area. Oh, yeah, it is lot area.
It's lot area.
Because it's R2.
Yeah, it's not frontage or width or any of the setbacks. It is just lot area. You have a, and we're only adding about 28% to the square footage. Relatively much. And how short are we on the area? This doesn't look like a very small lot.
10,000 square feet.
We're 461 square feet, right? Got to be 20,000?
16,000 or 15,000.
Right, and we got to be 20.
Right. Yeah, 4,000, yeah.
400.
4,000, 1,400.
I got it. Um, all right, so we have an almost big enough lot and a modest increase that is entirely within the envelope. Any questions? Alex, Chris, Susan?
Nope.
We're just the public.
Janine's trying to bring up the plan, I think, for the public, and she's having a hard time, that's okay. Bob, anything to ask for an app?
No, I guess not.
Okay. I like it.
After due deliberation, right, that's response is negative.
Okay. Any members of the public here with any questions or comments on the application at, sorry, well, 62 Curtis Street in Situate? We have one, that is our liaison from the Water Resource Commission. Bruce's iPad.
Yes.
Hi there.
Hey.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. This particular property is in the Water Resource Protection District, and the only question I have, I can't tell from the information I have at my fingertips, is if the end result of this expansion goes above the 15% impervious limit.
Well, that's 12% impervious down here. Proposed to my shits. He's got a lot of extra.
No, because you've got to add the driveway and walkways to that. He can improve these.
Our coverage calculation is just below shed total existence of 7.9 proposed sheds total, but he didn't add driveways or anything like that, so he has 12%.
Well, but the driveways aren't changing, right? So that should be a net zero anyway. I agree that they should probably be on the plan, but that would actually shrink the percentage.
It would increase the percentage of non-currents or impervious.
But I'm sorry, Bob, remind me, it's a 15% increase from what is currently there, right, Bruce?
No, the 15% is the total coverage of the property. So, for example, if the property was 100,000 square feet, you couldn't go above 15,000 square feet of impervious coverage.
Yeah, that's what I said too.
Do we not have that calculation here, and that is a determination for this board to make?
That's what they're trying to say.
But that's 12% doesn't appear to include the.
Driveway.
We don't have measurements on the driveway. Well, that's not great. Yep. I'm not, I mean, the driveway's big. Drive is, it's got to be more than the 50 by 20, so the drive isn't a, driveway's big. Yeah.
Run down and get one of the office.
Thank you.
I. What section of the code is our 15% coverage about, Bruce, do you know?
Yes. Yeah.
And also thank you for being diligent enough to catch that since we don't even have it on the plan.
So, this is the Water Resource Protection District bylaw, and it's under 520.5.
Page 43 in your books.
F1.
520.5, F1. So, 15% or 2500 square feet.
What if that kicks in as a stormwater management system and recharge, which is typically the underground galleries that you've seen proposed on our projects, including the one on Jericho Road, which is okay.
So, you're looking at about 3,000 acres.
Yeah, I mean, this is going to be over.
Right, well, I'm just.
We're at 1869 now. The driveway is definitely 1,000 square feet, it might be more than that.
Oh, that would jump to 2,800 point three.
And was it 2,869, right?
Or, well, I don't know, some limited. That's the gross.
That's 18%, if the driveway is only 1,000 square feet, the driveway's going to be more.
That driveway's 1,200 plus.
Yeah, so we're over 15%. And as this property appears to be subject to 520.5F. 520.5F1 states, no more than 15% of the area or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater, so it would be at 15%, shall be rendered impervious unless a system of stormwater management and artificial recharge or precipitation is developed, which is designed to, and it goes up. Do not believe this property has that system in place. And it says the driveway is paved, therefore it is impervious. It would appear that the application that's before us would violate 520.5F1. Bruce, I think you agree with what I just said?
Based on your calculations, again, I don't have the square footage of the coverage and all that, but.
We're, if we're wrong, I think there's more impervious area than we're estimating.
Okay.
So.
And even if we take the minimum by our rough calculation, I think we're at 17 or 18% impervious.
Yeah, so just so we're all clear on this, right? The code says no more than 15% or 2,500 square feet. 15% ends up being under 2,500 square feet. Right? So, we're at the 2,500 square foot limit, if you will, just so we're doing the right calculation, right? Unless, I mean, I, right, we're.
Says whichever is greater.
Yeah.
So, they're allowing like 2,490 or 2,500 square feet of impervious, but even if that driveway is 900 square feet, they're over 2,500 square feet.
That is what it appears to be. All right, under these lot cover calculations.
So, what I would suggest, we're going to hear from a few more people, is that we move towards a continuance of this application, so you could speak with your engineer, review this section, and determine if you want to go the route of that stormwater management system. Or if you want to get your impervious area to a place where you don't need that stormwater management system.
Okay. Would that be, say, removing pavement, like the gravel?
There's gravel driveway.
Stone driveway shall.
Okay, yep.
If I can input on that, it's not simply going to gravel driveway, unfortunately. We've had several instances where this has become controversial and a big deal. You really need to have an underlying bed of soil and, and, and sort of, that's engineered to be impervious. So, it's a very specific engineered soil, not just the gravel surface, but it goes down a couple of feet with this very specific soil type. It's got to be engineered, and only then, I can tell you from experience, will planning board, who has to input on this now, probably with a stormwater permit. So, sorry, that's what they're going to accept is impervious.
Just, just.
Impervious.
Just so I understand. I just want to make sure, I understand. If they removed the driveway.
Yep.
It removed all of the driveway, down to whatever condition the soil beneath the driveway is there, and then they laid down a stone driveway. Two questions, why would the planning board get involved?
Because at a point where you've got a stormwater management system, correctly, if I log this.
So, hang on, but in my scenario. They're making the property stay under the 25, right? So, then no planning board, they would have to come back here for their regular permit, unless I'm missing something.
You're getting tripped up on what this board can determine to be impervious, and does that meet the planning board's requirement for what they would consider impervious? I'm not, I don't know how long it would go, I really don't.
So. Interesting, yes.
Patricia Lambert is waiting to speak, and she's on the planning board, she might be able to help you.
Well, let's hear from Patricia.
Hello, how are you this evening?
Good, good.
Hi there.
Mr. Vogel, hi, how is everybody? I have two questions. One was about the stormwater permit, the other one is for Mr. Vogel. Mr. Vogel, is this an original Austin house?
Yes, it is, I believe, it's from the appearance.
Oh, Patricia, Patricia, lower your volume.
Okay, how's that?
It's better. Yep.
Okay, I guess this is another, another shout out to the historic commission to kind of step up and make sure our historic houses are protected. The other issue though is the stormwater. We have a lot of problems with these driveways that are being dug up and replaced, so I would strongly encourage you to either re-engineer this or come before us for a stormwater permit.
Just, I just want to understand, Patricia, if they tear up this driveway and lay down stone, that would be impervious? It wouldn't be impervious.
That's what planning has said in other cases.
That's right.
Planning has determined that even though water would be able to pass through a crushed stone driveway, it would not be impervious based on.
It can't sufficiently infiltrate what most of our native soils are. So, you need an engineered soil age under the driveway. Am I right about that, Patricia?
Yes, you are, Mr. Vogel.
It's very specific, because I've seen drawings of an impervious driveway that starts with half inch gravel, goes down to two inch gravel, goes down to a larger base, and that is considered impervious. Now, my question is, what if you remove the driveway and take it grass?
So, here's, I have another problem. This doesn't get to the planning board to make that determination. They don't need a stormwater permit today, and if they wanted to change their driveway, they don't need a stormwater permit to make it less impervious, and then they come back to us, and we would have to make that determination.
I think you could conceivably give them a special permit or whatever relief was requested from this board.
Yep.
I'm very frankly not sure that I could give them a building permit under those circumstances.
Well.
Without the planning board review and.
If I was their counsel, I think you, I'd say you might have to, because their application for that building permit wasn't in violation of. You would have to come to your determination, and then they would have to appeal it. The problem is, I think they might be appealing it to us.
Yeah, so, yeah, just, so.
I think the counsel on the back corner of the room might agree with me, then.
Is there all procedure problems that we're trying to work?
Yeah, but, well, and I'm just trying to get ahead of it, but also that's not our trouble.
Right.
I, I think you want to talk with your engineer, because you have to go one of these avenues. And we will figure that out.
And they'll know what the drainage system would be appropriate for this request.
They should, or they'll know someone who does, I'm against that second part, yes.
So, I mean.
They'll be able to present you with some options.
That would be.
Drainage system, driveway, move this or that.
The drainage system, that's for the town and my pocket.
That is, that is, that's complicated. You want to, you want to talk, you want to talk to your engineer and your pocket about that.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's.
This seems to be a little misunderstanding, though, if I was to invest in the drainage. Yeah, if I was to invest in the drainage system, was there a guarantee that we need for process?
You're.
You wouldn't have to build the drainage system in order to move forward with the process, it's simply have to have the design approved as part of your building permit.
Right, you would have to.
Build it, you would have to build it naturally, but you don't have to build it on spec.
Right, exactly.
So, what he's saying is, you would come up with the idea for the drainage system or the driveway, some combination of the two.
It's not engineering specific.
You'd come back to this board, we don't get the permit. That's right, and that's before you start making the progress.
But I mean, the first thing is to do the impervious area calculation, what is it really with both as it currently exists and with the new, as the new plan, the as, you know, as you would like this built, and then figure out where you can make changes.
I think, I think the main point you're bringing back to your engineer is, you wrote 12%, they're saying it's more than that, because if they don't think you factored in the driveway.
Right, okay. I think that's where you got to go first.
Any other questions from the public or our participants on Zoom?
Yeah, so this is Bruce again.
Yes, Bruce.
I found the size of the lot, looks like, as you, I guess you know, 36 or 0.36 of an acre. So, to the prior point, it looks like the 20. So to the prior point, it looks like the twenty-five hundred square feet is larger than the fifteen percent.
Yes.
So the, so the magic number is twenty-five hundred square feet.
Agreed.
True, well, we just, we don't have a calculation on the driveway, right, or we don't appear to have a calculation on, on the driveway.
Right.
Right, that's, that's the great unknown here.
Right.
Yep.
But I think, I got my press, it's gotta be, it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's gonna take more than the twenty-five.
I don't, I don't disagree.
Yeah. Looking what the numbers are looking like.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Maybe that's.
You gotta measure.
Right, gotta measure it and, you know, you make a change.
Right. Um, Bruce, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Well, actually, Bob, just a question for us. So I understand the checks and balances, I, I wanna think we're always gonna have Bruce, but say Bruce decides to take the third Thursday off one night. This would have gotten caught at the building permit stage?
Yes.
Does he have checks and balances to ever catch that?
We, we, we would have agreed that, um.
Right.
The engineer didn't consider Situate zoning.
Right, right, I think that's right. Yep. Uh, anyone else from, it looks like it would be Zoom at this point with any questions on the Curtis Street application? So, I believe, I don't wanna speak for you, you are requesting a continuance to our July twenty-first hearing. So you can further consult with your engineer.
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion that we grant the request for a continuance of the sixty-two Curtis Street application to our July twenty-first hearing. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much. And Bruce?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for not making them come back again with an entirely different application. If they thank you for that as well, they would have had to pay a fee twice.
Right.
Uh, so they, they, they owe you a beer and if they don't get you, I'm good for it, because we're overdue.
Fair enough. I actually had a question for you, Anthony, I, I don't wanna interrupt your proceedings, but I did have a question about the Williamsburg property.
You know what, let's hold that till the end, we'll, we'll let these guys go and then I'll, I'll be here and so will you. And this, this, I don't imagine this is gonna take too long. Uh, we are going to move on to our additional business, which is regarding lots one through three at Lowerwood Drive in Situate. Requesting an extension for the DVA permit for an additional two-year period to July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Welcome.
Thank you. It's Matt Mitchell on behalf of the applicant, I'm pitch aid for Jeffrey Lees.
Hi there.
Some of the time.
He is a terrible swing, so I think that's fair.
Yeah. So the, the, the permit was, um, actually voted on December nineteen, it was two thousand nineteen, it was filed with the town clerk on March eleventh of twenty twenty, right at the beginning of, of.
Yeah.
So the SJC issued a bunch of orders, um, which ultimately told steps its limitations until, um, until June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Which would put us at July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two for the expiration of the permit because there was still some time left in the review period, blah, blah, blah. Um, so we, we made some progress with the project, we've run into some, um, utility issues, the, the lots are right here on the line with, uh, the town of Norwell, um, so we're having some, some issues with water. Um, we had to go through some easements for the common driveway, so we've been, we've been chugging along with it, but I mean, as a, as a budget caution, we'd like an extension, um, for another two years. It can either be from July fifteenth, if that's the fourth pleasure, it can be from March eleventh, um, when it was two years from when it was filed with the town clerk. Um, but we're seeing an extension. Move on.
So, I mean, could you imagine if, given a global pandemic and, uh, a global supply chain crisis, we weren't willing to grant these extensions?
A global town of Norwell.
That would be unusual, given, for, and in town of Norwell. This seems like about as reasonable of an extension request as we ever see in my thoughts.
Yeah.
Um, and just, just to clarify, and again, I was just looking at it, we're looking to go to, well, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, about two years.
Yes, from, from the action year.
Yep.
That's fine. It's either the March date or the July date.
Su- Susan, any questions?
No, just what the date we choose, right?
Yeah, I think, uh, I would just as soon give them, given that what's going on in the economy and the world around us isn't exactly one hundred percent stable at the moment. I would just as soon give you, um.
Longer.
A, a little more time, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Fantastic. Uh, anyone else? Bob, any concerns at all?
No, no.
All right, any, anyone else, any questions about, uh, Lowerwood Drive? Public? Don't think so. No. Okay. Uh, I will make a motion that the board extend the timing for the permit of lots one through three at Lowerwood Drive in Situate to now expire on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, good luck.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ivan, for anyone who's still listening, uh, this is Bruce, Bruce, what's your last name again? I'm sorry.
Uh, Arbanese, Bruce Arbanese.
Bruce Arbanese, who is our liaison with the Water Resource Commission. Uh, Bruce, you had a question about five Williamsburg, right?
I did, um, you know, after the last meeting, um, there was kind of a handoff to, to our group, the Water Resource, uh, Commission. But, uh, when Becky spoke with you, it sounded as though you were going to initiate a peer review of the plan that the applicant, uh, provided. And I was just wondering, at this point, where that stands or what their review process is gonna look like.
Certainly, so we have, the, the building office has reached out to Chessia, I believe, for a review of the proposal.
That was emailed this afternoon to you.
Yes, and so, uh, this afternoon, there was, Bob, we'll call it some confusion on exactly what we were looking for with Mr. Chessia, which I believe has been clarified. And now we have yet to receive a formal proposal.
No, that's not true.
Oh, this, this afternoon?
This afternoon.
I think we received it late today.
I am not that caught up.
Yeah, we did, uh, um, Janine gave the email out to the board.
Fantastic. We will give you, uh, the if I don't, I don't, uh, I missed the, oh, do you have a proposal? Do you? I should. He's getting, you're gonna try to tell him, tell him. So, uh, Bruce, we don't, I don't know if we need to keep everyone around for this, we will forward you the proposal, which we just received this afternoon.
Okay.
We're gonna take a look at it, we would love to hear from you on it, if you think, if you have any concerns that anything is missing. And then I think we need to bounce it off the applicant to make sure they're willing to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's fifteen, uh, they're proposed, so fifteen hundred for the review and another three hundred to attend the public hearing.
If, it doesn't give a, gives, give a timeframe for how long it would take them to, uh?
Three weeks, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So it sounds like for eighteen hundred bucks or maybe even fifteen hundred bucks, because we might not need them to respond, to attend the hearing. We'll make that determination once we receive their, their review.
Right.
Uh, the applicant needs to approve fifteen hundred bucks, which frankly, I, I'm not afraid to say, I'd be shocked if they weren't okay with that. And, um, and then we'll have that in time for the continued hearing. And we'll hopefully even have a week and a half or two weeks for your group and our group to review it in advance of that hearing. And then we'll have, when it's hopefully a substantive hearing.
Sounds good.
Uh, Bruce, Bob, could you, could you email Janine in the morning, uh, no, you're not in here this morning. Email me in the morning, so I've got your email address.
Yeah, you on the, uh, on the Situate site, can I find it there?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, it's just automobile at situate, I got it.
Alright, will do.
And I'll send that out to you.
And there we go.
Fair enough.
Very timely, very timely question.
And then, and then Bruce, just, just for everyone, I know, uh, Becky and your, uh, one of the things you wanted to make sure we highlighted was not just the protection of the tributary and obviously the eventual water source in perpetuity, but also as, or maybe even certainly more immediate, the protection of the tributary and that water source during construction. And that was absolutely part of our request to Mr. Chessia. That would be part of his review.
Right.
All right.
Alright, thank you.
Of course.
And, uh, everybody gets so much time for the game, huh?
I, I think we might.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, thanks for everything.
Alright, bye-bye.
Janine, we have some minutes, right?
Yeah, man, man, right up top of these guys, you're running a tight ship. Uh, any chance you wanna call offensive plays for the Patriots or something? I would make a motion that the board approve the made meeting minutes as circulated by the incredibly diligent Janine. Uh, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much and happy Thursday.
Wait, Janine, if you.